Uh-huh.
Oh.
I guess not.
Okay.
He'll probably show up at seven.
You're good to go whenever you're ready.
All righty. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the, seeing how the time is 6:32, welcome you all to the July meeting of the zoning board of adjustments. Real quick up front, we have four members here tonight, three permanents, one alternate. Gail, you will be fully vested tonight in all the applications that are before us at the moment. And lest, nope, even with that, you still be, so if Roland shows up. So with that, now what that tells is with four members, an affirmative vote would need to be three, one in favor of whatever the motion is. Okay, so what that translates to, if it's a motion to deny, you would need three votes to affirm denial. If it's a vote to pass it, then you would need three votes to pass, okay? So I'm gonna be offering this up, that if anybody wishes, any of the applications wishes to go to the next meeting, you have an opportunity now, because once we start getting into it, there's no turning back, okay? So I make that offer once. Any of the three applicants wish to go to the next meeting?
Mr. Chairman, Patrick Wood, representing Paul Duggan. We're on the agenda, I think the last item on the agenda. We would request that we be rescheduled for the August meeting.
Very good.
All right. Thank you.
Let the record indicate they're gonna move to the next meeting, and would you put them first?
Yep, they would be continued.
Okay, anybody else wish to be moved to the next meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you. There being none, we're gonna go ahead and consider everybody else wishes to be heard tonight, and therefore will be. Okay, so first on the agenda, after the housekeeping stuff we just spoke of is roll call.
Lori Gibbs.
Here.
Steve Bogart.
Here.
Michael Foot.
Here.
Gail Ober.
Here.
Roland and Michael, the elevatia are absent.
Okay, so the record indicates, let the record indicate, we do have a quorum.
Yes.
All right. Item five, acceptance of minutes from the previous meeting. Everybody get an opportunity to review. Any changes, any additions, subtractions, corrections? There being none, like to entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the 6/18/2019 minute, minute, meeting?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Give it a second.
And then we got a second. All those in favor? Okay.
I'll abstain, I wasn't at the last meeting, so.
Okay, but sounds good. So that passes. Three, one. All right, extensions. We have three extensions tonight. We can hear them all at once, and then we can load them separately, okay? Aqua Vista LLC, special exception, extension request, 664 Scenic Road. That's the first one. 6.1, 6.2 is Aqua Waterfront LLC, special exception, extension, 63-99 Fletcher Lane. And the next one is 6.3 Aqua Waterfront LLC, variance extension, 6399 Fletcher Lane. Would the applicant come forward?
Good evening. Chris Dupree for, on behalf of the applicant. I think new developments since my last appearance here and a couple of changes since we filed the application. You know, we're still working on the townhomes adjacent to this site. The construction of those will be completed early, early this fall, hopefully. We've sold seven of, of the eight of those units, so one townhome left. And on these, this site specifically, we've renewed our alteration of terrain permit with the state DES, and that new permit came in. We're back before the planning board in October for an extension of the planning board approvals. And, you know, in terms of our other mid-rise building at its status quo, we still have eight units left in that building, which is a model for these buildings that the zoning applications are for. Other than that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Okay, this, the extension next one will be for six months, is that correct?
They are all six months.
Okay, and what will that date be?
January 15, 2020.
Now, the, when I was last in, it was a mid-month date that extended to July 31. So I guess the question would be, would it, would it be January 15 or would it be January 31? It doesn't really matter, just depending on what the date of the meeting is.
That's true. Let me pull the calendar for January, I mean, the 31st would not be.
Out of line.
Out of line.
I was gonna say, why don't we just make it so it's easy and make it the last day of the month? The 31st.
Yep.
And that way it should encompass the meeting and no one can have a oopsie.
Don't like those.
Yeah, that would be, that's a Friday.
Okay, so that should allow the meeting to happen before, before then. Okay, any questions of the applicant?
No, they seem pretty straightforward here, this extension, we've seen this.
Yep, there's been no major change, no updates. They came in before it expired. The application was here, they're here in the meeting before it expires, so. Any other questions? Okay, you may have a seat.
Thank you.
I'm gonna open it to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against the three applications. Therefore, I'll bring it back to the board. Any last questions? Any closing comments? There being none, we'll go ahead and, as previously stated, it seems like there was no major change for a concern to have to do a rehearing of the applications. There didn't see, it was, the application was presented to the board in the hearing before the end date, so it was.
Presented in a timely manner.
Timely manner. We set the new date for one, for it to, if passes, it will expire on 1, we have 1/31/2020. Who would've thought? Okay, like to entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the request for the extension, for the special exception for 664 Scenic Road to allow multifamily in the SFR zone, to extend it to January 31, 2020. The applicant has met the standards for extension. He's made a consistent effort to meet the intent of active and substantial development. The zoning ordinance has not changed, or if it has, the changes don't affect this parcel. The abutting and/or nearby properties have not been developed or improved, other than those owned or controlled by the applicant. No other, other properties in the contributing watersheds, as outlined in project stormwater report, have not been developed or improved since the subject parcels were approved. No other properties downstream watersheds, as outlined in that report, have been developed or improved, and the city continues to hold adequate site security to assure the site stabilization or completion.
And the new date will?
And the new date will be January 31, 2020.
And this is for application 6.1? All those, so we have a motion?
You need a second.
I'll second that.
We have a second discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion for 6.1? Okay, it passes. Now for 6.2, you wanna use the same motion?
Yeah, essentially.
So we'll use the same motion as in 6.1 with the same renewal date? And with that being said, all those in favor of the motion as?
We have the motion, who, Mike, we need a second.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Gail's got it, okay.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Right.
Okay, that one passes. Now for 6.3, would you like to use the same motion as in 6.1 and 6.2?
I would.
With indicating the same end date? Like to have a motion to, who seconds it?
I'll second it.
Okay, 'cause I made the motion.
Oh, you made it, you made the motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Okay.
See you in January.
See you in January.
Thank you.
Do the recycling. We're going green and wearing. Okay, next, we're going to public hearings. Move this little baby back, it's making noise. First application is application Z02019-0022. It's a variance applicant, is requesting a variance from Article 6, Section 23535, minimum setback requirements to allow for the relocation of a set of stairs on the existing dock. Would the applicant please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we might help you?
How you doing? My name's Keith Norman. I'm here on behalf of the Dollhouse Association. We're looking for a variance in order to replace the set of stairs, the existing access to the dock. It's a little bit dilapidated, and we're trying to get it back up to code. I propose the widening of the stairs to 42 inches. The state came back and said that they will not let us relocate, but they will let us replace it in kind through the DES permitting, and we could go as great as six feet wide. We're just looking to obtain a 42-inch width at this point. Now, this is tied to another permit, so I don't know, I said I should bring it up, but it is under review through DES for some pylons that are being, asking to have installed in addition, but it doesn't pertain to this variance for this application, I don't believe.
So what is the current width of the steps now?
36.
36, and you're gonna go to 42? And we're hearing this because it's?
Well, originally he was intending to relocate the stairs, but the, even making them wider, he's increasing basically non-conformity. That parcel is so narrow that no matter what they do there, they're gonna encroach on front, rear.
Okay.
It's, it's increasing the bulk of the non-conformity.
And these are the stairs that go down to the dockets?
Correct.
From that land? And DES gave you a permit to go ahead and do that?
You got, the town commission signed off. I set the process up for the actual permit for the pylons, and then we were going for the variance.
Just for the steps?
Correct. They granted, in the letter they sent me online, they said that we could replace in kind up to six feet wide, but we could not relocate. So more or less, the existing point, I get, they didn't really specify which direction I could go six feet wide, but they granted that I could go up to six feet wide, but I can't relocate the existing structure.
Okay.
That's the shoreline protection, yeah.
Yeah.
We can always make a contingent on if he gets any other state, local, or federal permits.
Yeah.
You know, that he needs to do it.
I wasn't gonna originally tie this to the pylons, but I was advised by DES to do that, 'cause it was a minor impact. So they combined it into one permit application. I don't know if that was good or bad, or indifferent.
So the permit's not actually here, we just got a letter of?
Sounds like it's in process, from what I'm understanding, from what you're saying. They've just put the two projects on, on one permit.
Correct. You guys, I believe, signed off and said I could get the permit if it got approved for the variance for the stairs. And then we had a separate?
Right, for the pylons.
Permit for the pylons, which was a minor impact on the pylons aspect.
So he's all set as far as shoreline protection? He just needs the variance from you and then any building permits for?
Okay, so this, the variance from us will have no?
Bearing on the pylons or what shoreline?
On the pylons, or, right.
It's, it's just that they just have to be?
Just the width of the steps to go from 36?
Correct.
To 42?
Correct, yep.
Okay, just making that clear. Any other questions?
So basically, you're just, you're going to take where the, just remove where the old stairs are now and put new ones?
So the plan is, if you're looking at the print that shows you from the water to the land? The left side's gonna stay existent conforming to where it is, and we're gonna go to the right?
And just bring it out?
42 inches. And the ma, the biggest reason for that is the members in the association, we're all getting older, and being able to have access up and down, it's really unsafe how narrow the stairs are for us to go up and down the set of stairs. So if one person's coming up versus going down and carrying stuff and the actual integrity of the existing structure. I don't know if you guys have all the pictures of the stairs, but I have everything in here. If you guys would like to see copies of it, just to give you guys an idea of what you're looking at.
I would like to.
What are the stairs made out of now?
Pressure treated.
And will the replacement stairs also be pressure treated? Thank you.
Do you guys have a copy of this here also? Was this submitted to you also?
I do not have that one, it may be in the building, so.
I'll give you my back.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, that's helpful.
My uncle just said that the stairs might not be PT. We're assuming they're PT. They've been there for thirty-some odd years, but we would be putting PT.
Oh, okay. Are you gonna add a railing to these stairs at all?
We're gonna, a handrail?
Yeah.
Yes.
You have to.
Yeah, it'll be to build the code.
Okay, oh, all right, all right.
Yeah.
I personally don't see any problem with this.
We actually asked for the relocation because we wanted to build the new set next to the existing set, so we could actually use the stairs to get up and down while we were building it. But where, they declined that through DES, that's not an option, so we're just gonna tear them out and do a rebuild.
So if I'm facing the stairs from the bottom of the deck, looking up, you're gonna extend it to the right?
Yes, sir.
You're gonna take care of, 'cause it looks like there's some big rocks there in the picture.
Yeah, they just, they just sit on the ground, they're just surface rocks, and the stairs actually sit on the ground as well.
Okay.
We're actually probably not even gonna have to remove a rock, we're actually probably just gonna build a new brick, and it'll actually be a supporting support.
Okay. And no other vegetation will be disturbed?
No, sir.
Cool beans?
Just making them wider and putting new wood in.
Okay, all right.
It's one question that was stated on the application.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? May I have a seat for a second? Wanna open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Bring it back to the board for further, for further questions? Hi, Roland. There being no further questions? Closing comments? Nope? Good?
Any comments?
Yeah, no, okay. With that, I'm gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion. My only thing would be to make sure that the permit is, is followed through with for the shoreline protection.
Conditional on the state approvals.
And that it also indicates that there is no way that if a variance is needed for the pylons, this is indicating that we're providing that? Someone like to, about a motion?
Yeah, the only other thing I would add to the motion is that no additional vegetation be disturbed.
Okay.
This is 3160 Parade Road?
No.
No, no. This is the Weir's, you know, the little dollhouse?
Which one?
The Dollhouse Association?
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he wants to replace the steps that lead down to the water. It's across the street from the little dollhouse.
I would make a motion to approve application ZO 2019-022, 231 Weir's Boulevard, for the Dollhouse Association to replace, for a variance from 23535, the minimum front setback, to replace the stairs leading down from the boulevard to the dock. The stairs are currently old and dilapidated and in definite need of repair and upgrade. This variance will permit them to replace the stairs and increase the width from 36, a current 36 inches wide to 42 inches of width. It extend, it's essentially replacing, slightly increasing a non-conforming, currently non-conforming structure. The increase is minimal. It's not contrary to the public interest. It has no impact on the public at all, no one from the public spoke for or against the application. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because it, the, it's a non-conformity as it is, and it, it actually permits safer and more reasonable use of the property. Doing substantial, it does substantial justice to permit the variance by allowing an upgrade for the stairs, making them safer to use. The value of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. It will increase, it will improve the appearance of the property and enhance the general appearance of the area. And the unnecessary hardship, the distinguishing factor of the lot is that it's extremely narrow and it doesn't make any difference where you, where you place the stairs. You're still gonna be extending into the front setback. And the state has required them to replace in kind instead of building a second se, a new set beside it. And the proposed use is a reasonable one. It's necessary for, it's necessary to have the stairs to provide safe access to the dock that's pertinent to the condominium across the boulevard. The conditions applied to it would be to ensure that any state or DES permits are obtained, that this is a variance for the placement of the stairs within the setback only, and for none of the approvals that might be required for the state, and that no additional vegetation is to be disturbed in the placement of the stairs.
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a second discussion. If I may tweak one word, it's one of those things where it was speaking of the width, it's not to exceed 42 inches?
Say not to exceed. I would, I would agree to that, not to exceed 42.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll, I'll agree on the second, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion of the motion? That there being none, all those in favor of the motion? Okay, it passes, enjoy your new steps.
Sure, she gets this one.
Yeah, I'm gonna give her this one.
Does he want any of these back?
I guess not, 'cause they're what goes.
No, once it's submitted, it's there.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Let the record indicate Roland's here, and so we now have a five-member board, and the, the rules of voting now apply as normal. Okay. Next application is application 201-0023, variance 3160 Parade Road. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article 6, Section 23535, minimum setback requirements, front setback to allow for the addition of an eight-foot wide farmer's porch on the front of the existing house. Would the applicant come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we might help you?
Hello, my name is Jill Miller, the owner of 3160 Parade Road. I am requesting to be able to put on a eight-foot farmer's porch the length of the house. I am zoned at RR2, which is a 75-foot setback. Seventy-five feet puts me almost to the back of my house. So I'm having, since I've bought the house, there's some serious water issues coming off the road. There's, and I've got the metal roof on there, so it's driving down. I've dug out the perimeter, I put in a French drain, I've waterproofed the foundation inside and out. I just feel by putting this, this roof, extending it out another eight feet, gets the water away from the house even further, gives it time to seep and let the French drain kinda do its job. That's what I'm looking to do.
Okay. Do you know off the top of your head how much room would be left on that front set, front setback?
I can tell you that in a minute. So from, you might have to use a calculator for me, it's been a long day, so. From the road to the front wall of my house is 52 feet. So subtract eight from that, we're at?
So forty-four feet should be left.
Forty-four feet.
Forty-four, yeah, and that would actually be the porch. Um, how do you plan on accessing this porch? Are there gonna be stairs that are gonna come even further into the setback or will they be on the side?
So the porch goes, it's, it does not even, there's no height there, um, because of the way the property is there. So literally, there's one granite step in front of it, um, and then a walkway off, um, and that's it. So you would have that one granite step that comes out, um, and give you that opening. I think it's five feet, I think we went five feet. Granite step, comes out just twelve inches.
Okay, so it's five feet wide and it's another foot, so technically speaking-
Then you've got a foot, so it'd be nine feet.
You're gonna be forty-three feet from the front of-
Correct.
Of the road, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Is there already a porch on the front of this?
There is a landing. There is no porch. There's a landing to, if you're looking at the house to the right, that accesses the existing porch that was on there.
Yeah. Yep.
So this porch would tie into that and so it would be the full length of the house.
Is this the porch? Is this the house?
I don't have, I don't have the photograph.
Yes, so this here was closed in, in my building permit that I pulled. So right here is a concrete pad-
Oh, okay, I see.
Um, that, that we just put a safety, cause that was deteriorating.
Oh, thanks. Oh, you printed it, yep.
So we just put, there's like a little, uh, landing, a treated landing.
Yeah, I figured, I, yeah, show, pretty obvious where she was.
So the porch, the farmer's porch, the roof will come about halfway out.
I didn't get the picture. Oh, you printed this.
Yeah, oh, I just went online and printed it out.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This way, along the front of the house.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't get it in the pack, but it was, the text.
Okay. And, uh, uh, it's not gonna be finished. There's no plans to finish this porch off, make it another room, nothing like that. This is just a straight farmer's porch.
It's just a porch to put a rocking chair on and to keep the water out of my basement.
And a roof.
It'll have a roof. The roof starts about halfway down the existing roof and it'll come out enough to pitch it, um, and get it away from the building.
What it wants to do is put it across the front here, so it will face the road. But it's just gonna come around and meet off of this, come out and meet that.
Okay.
And really it's-
Cool beans. All right. Any other questions at the moment? There being none, you may have a seat for a second. I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application. Please come forward and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate, no one from the public was to speak for or against this application. Bring it back fo, to the board for, for the questions.
Can I ask what the setback in RR one is?
RR one is forty feet.
Forty?
Forty.
I wonder why there's such a difference? Forty versus seventy-five.
It's the RR two, that they wanted the-
RR two is gonna be more open and agricultural, rural.
And, and then sometimes when you ask about it, they talk about a tree line down there, which in a lot of these in RR two are open fields, so we don't necessarily see that as much as one would envision it.
Okay. So any other questions? Staff have any questions or any thoughts?
It's just, it's an older, it's an existing older home.
Okay. Any closing comments? There being none, I'm gonna close it to the public or bring it to the board for discussion.
I think it's a reasonable request.
Yeah, I-
I think particularly in light of how much work she's done to try to ameliorate the drainage.
Well, yeah, and her hardship is that she sits below the road. There's not-
She sits below the road. She's, she's already into, the house was built in sixty-seven. She's already into the setback. There's just really, you can't, short of picking the house up and moving back, there's just nothing you can do about that.
There's nothing you can do about this, yeah. I don't see that, there's no neighbors here or butters. I don't see that it would have any deleterious effects on anybody.
Improper notification was made and just to, to reiterate Ori's, uh, comment that yes, there are butters in the town of Meredith, or city of Meredith. They were notified as well.
Yeah, okay.
There's only one association that was not able to be notified, but in speaking with the assessor from Meredith, they have no contact information and they cannot get any contact information. They have tried, so.
That's interesting. And they're so far away anyway. I mean, I just, it's way in the back. I can't imagine that they would have an issue with-
Right, but it, but-
But, yeah, I real, yeah, I-
We do have to.
OCD, I know, I'm, I'm OCD about that, I am. I admit it.
But just, just to, you know, for the record to clarify, yes, they weren't properly noticed.
Yeah, I think, I like, I actually think it'll look nice, to be honest with you. I've always liked porches.
It will be an improvement, yes, I, I like, well, I like-
So that's a personal assessment, not a zoning board assessment, but I, I've always liked front porches, so.
They're gonna be a nice addition to the house. Finish it, maybe give it a more finished look, I think.
Yeah.
And then I can put the siding on. You won't have to look at the Lowe's advertising anymore.
Huh, well, that might not be such a good thing.
I know nothing.
It says nothing. I know nothing.
Okay. If that's no further discussion, like to entertain a motion?
I'll give it a shot. I approve that, I, I make a motion that we approve. Request for variance for application two thousand nineteen zero zero two three, property exists at thirty-one sixty Parade Road. To allow the applicant to can, to build an eight-foot porch across the front of her house with the condition that the porch not exceed eight feet out from her house and that there be no more than an additional foot of step landing for access. The applicant, the, um, project, the variance is not contrary to the public interest. I, I don't see how a, a front porch affects anybody's public interest. Um, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. It's not really gonna affect the neighborhood in any conceivable way. Uh, substantial justice is done. Um, the values of surrounding property are, I don't think this has any effect on them at all. And, uh, the literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in a necessary hardship. Uh, the hardship in this instance is the grading of the house. The house is below the road grade. I can't say for sure, um, well, anyway, I don't know if this'll fix your problem, hopefully.
Will help.
It'll help, but, um, so the unnecessary hardship for me is the grade of the property and that the house sits below the road.
Okay, we have a motion?
A second.
We have a second discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion? Enjoy your porch.
Thank you. You were much easier on me this time.
Yes, I remember you from last time.
Yeah, I thought you-
I can wave to all the cars as they go by.
What's that?
Yeah.
Well, this is my next door neighbor who was here against me at the last meeting, so now we're friends and she's gonna come hang out on my porch, so.
Who could?
Enjoy it.
Okay, so let the record indicate that, uh, application zero zero two four, variance two two one Pleasant Street, has been moved, it's continued to the next-
Yep.
Actually, it's not continued because we never opened it, so it would be moved.
We just moved to the, yep.
Which makes me happy because now I have time to study that.
Yep.
Okay, uh. Any other business before the board?
The only thing would be is if you want to, with Suzanne, if you wanna make any kind of comment or-
Well, okay.
Well, I actually have one business question to ask, just because there appeared to be a little bit of confusion. Do, do, are we, have we decided as a board that all of our meetings will be at six-thirty and not seven, or was this a one-off?
No, it's six-thirty.
Cause this is my first time back, so I-
For the exception of when they move us to Tuesday.
Okay, all right.
And then if they move us to Tuesday, it'll be seven o'clock, cause I don't get off of work till six.
Okay, all right. I, I'm sorry, that was more just cleanup stuff, but, you know, let the record show that the zoning board, when it meets on Mondays, will meet at six-thirty.
Correct. It just happened that the last meeting was bumped at the last minute.
Unless it's a Tuesday, if you ever.
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Was it, I don't know if it was last month or the month before George Landry came in because he wanted to put a porch on the front of his house on, um, School Street, on sixteen School Street?
Mm-hmm, last month.
He's got the house for sale.
Is that-
It won't, it won't affect it. It goes with the property, not the person, so.
It does. That's, that was my question with that.
Yeah, a variance would go with the property. It's not to an individual person, it's to a location.
So if any owner wants to put a porch on again.
So just to let y'all-
In the next two years.
Yes, that's right. Within the next two years. If he does, if he doesn't do it within two years, then-
Then it lapses and he has to come back.
Due to reasons that are of her own, Suzanne, uh, decided to resign from the board, so, uh, and we'll leave that between her and whatnot, so, uh, I don't feel it proper to discuss that on the board. She will be sorely missed.
I'd like to thank her for all of her hard work.
I worked with her myself. I've personally worked with her for a lot of years, so.
Yeah, it makes me very sad.
You did come back. Didn't I see you at the store?
Yes.
And you asked me about-
This is all your fault, Roland.
Well, I'm glad that you're back.
Oh, Suzanne's retiring. That's too bad.
Very, very sad to see.
So, uh, with that, we're gonna have to think about, uh, a replacement and I will be discussing that with Dean. And then, once we get that replacement, we'll need to, uh, look for a vice chair and a secretary. Cause Suzanne held both of those roles.
Yes.
So, keep that in mind. We won't, uh, act on anything tonight. I would like a moment to discuss that with Dean before we, the next meeting and we'll go from there. Okay, is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm set, set to go for the council.
I'm sorry?
Uh, in August, their, their meeting, to, for my reappointment.
Yes, yes.
Which hopefully they'll do.
Now, is two twenty-one Pleasant gonna be on the next agenda?
It'll be on the next agenda. They had a four-person, we only had a four-person board at the time and-
I gotta go in here a few minutes early.
And they, uh, requested to, I made the offer because of the four vote and they requested to go to the next meeting.
Well, is, is it, is it for reasons of work or something? Is it not possible for you to be here at seven?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay, cause I, I was just gonna say that you may wanna put him later on the agenda if there's-
No, six-thirty isn't a problem for me, except that-
Oh, okay.
The most important company that we have on our computer has been down over the weekend and today and we've been working all day to try to bring it back and, uh-
Oh, okay, I just, because now that we're down to four and an, and an alternate, and I think there's a second alternate, I'd hate to see him come back to have the same issue if seven o'clock was gonna be-
Are you an alternate or a-
I'm just an alternate, so-
Yeah, we have two alternates.
Yeah, well, I just would hate to see him come back if there was always-
One of the alternates needs to apply for-
You know.
Regular, regular position.
Right. That, that was my only concern is I hate to see people keep coming back because-
Well, I, I'm, actually, I wanted time, I wanted time to study that.
Well, they can choose to be heard. They have that option also.
Oh, they, they do, they do.
Cause we do have a quorum, so the running of the bill-
And they're still gonna need the three votes regardless of how many of us are here. I mean, you know, whether we're four, three, or five.
We were, we worked with three one night, a couple months ago.
Oh, I've worked with three, but.
Any other business before the board? Make a motion to retire for the evening?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? And with that, a good night to all.
That was great.